I need a motion to conclude the executive session and reconvening in the opening meeting.
I'll second it. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, five, five zero. It's all here. Okay, and we want to note that there are no decisions made in the executive session. Okay, we're gonna...
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
All right. Back to the head. All right. That concludes your report, okay. No departmental reports, I'm gonna go ahead and start with council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
I hope you all, there's a big crowd, Wednesday the 13th, about 2:20 at the birthday of Buxey. And everything turned out great. I guess the guys will come in on the motorboat, but it's good. Upgraded a little bit.
I thought they were paddling.
And they had a nice field to walk on, everything. Everything turned out good. They had a great thing at the Lister Center, a big crowd. And then later that night at the Buxey Brewery on Bone Street, an extenuation of the party, so it turned out great. A lot of people came, showed up, saying, you know, "Happy Buxey Birthday." 2:20, saying, "I was working on 321." So I only been here about half the...
300.
But I wouldn't be good.
300.
That's good. That concludes your report. Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, just one item. On February 27th, which is a Wednesday, I have a ward meeting, and everybody's invited. It's free, it's open to the public, and even though it focuses on Ward Five, anybody can attend. That's at the Snyder Center, 6 o'clock, Wednesday, February 27th. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I just got a couple of things. I want to first off congratulate the Biloxi High Indian baseball team for their opening day success against West Harrison. Hard, a very hard fought game, and they prevailed 5 to 3. Coach Eddie Lofton is more than a coach to these young kids, he's certainly a mentor, and he teaches them how to be great young men. If you get a chance to come out and support the Biloxi High baseball program, please do it. I believe their next, I'll call it a home game, is in MGM Park. That's coming up, I think the date is March the 2nd. So hopefully everybody can get out there and support the team. We got Mardi Gras carnival, all that good stuff is starting to happen. Neptune has a big ball coming up this weekend, but even more important, we have our two Biloxi parades the following weekend. The Night Parade in Biloxi, it's gonna be fantastic again, and then we have the Grand Daddy of All with GCCA with the Fat Tuesday Day Parade. Please get the word out to everybody, let's support those big Biloxi parades, it's part of our culture. That concludes my report.
Okay, Ms. Barrett?
No report.
Okay, Mr. Deming? Okay, Ms. Newman still out, and...
Let me ask, I know Dr. Tisdale was at the ballgame, so there was a great Biloxi High Guffport rivalry that Biloxi prevailed, and I think their next step is pedal, I believe, for South Half Championship, is that right?
I have to turn on my mic, otherwise it doesn't pick it up on the video.
Basketball.
Basketball. Anyway, basketball, yeah, they play Saturday night at Biloxi High School, the boys do, and the girls from the district, they play Friday night at Biloxi High School. They may be rescheduled to both play on the same night, I don't, they do things like that.
It was a tremendous game, and I think I would encourage everybody to go out and support those Indians.
Couldn't have done it without you, Mayor.
How about that? Very good.
Absolutely, and of course, my report, we had a great weekend this weekend, a crew of legends, some of our legendary players came down. We had the Second Liner's Parade in our community, big festivities. Chief, I want to thank you for all the officers out there. I mean, we had about 80 units, that's probably one of the biggest Second Liner celebrations of Mardi Gras we had. Thank you, Mayor, for coming on out, presenting the king and queen of the Second Liners, all their certificates, we had a ball out there that day, so thank you again, and that concludes my report. All right, we're gonna move on to public agenda, citizen comments, a total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person. And I'm gonna ask anyone on my left, would they like to come up and speak? When they come up and speak, please sign in and state your name and address.
Would you ever report?
Okay. Come on up, now you have three minutes, so anyone on my left?
Hi, my name is Ronnie Dupree, 1664 Beach Boulevard. My wife and I own a unit in Oak Shores since 2013. Our intent has always been to use it for our personal enjoyment and to host others as a short-term vacation rental as they enjoy the Gulf Coast themselves. Currently, we find ourselves in an unusual situation. Many specific use permits were declined in deference to a possible rezoning based on changing conditions. I feel that rezoning for this property is proper. As has been requested by many of the residents of Oak Shores, many of us want to use our property in this manner, and the growth of businesses on all sides would not make this rezoning unusual. I would encourage you to vote in favor of this rezoning. Speaking for myself, I believe the city of Biloxi has much to gain if short-term rentals are allowed in a responsible, regulated manner. Whether it's allowed by right, regulated as specific use, or some combination of both, many owners of Oak Shores are eager to participate in the proper way. We now need to determine what that way is going to be. We would ask that the council make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left would like to come on up? Anyone else to my left? Anyone to my right?
I live in one of them most of the time, as I retire from New Orleans to Biloxi, using the foreign city. The complex is under going, a complete metamorphosis over the last couple of years. It was crime ridden, the police were very familiar with it, and it's completely changed now. It's families, smiling faces, the whole property is completely different to us. And if there's ever a complex to consider a zoning change, Oak Shores would be it because of the location and it's the perfect place for it. There are no residential communities, houses next by, it's commercial all around us, and I would encourage you to please approve the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Rose James, I work for Biloxi Beach Resort Rentals. We are currently managing 27 units out at Oak Shores. In regard to what Oak Shores brings to short-term rentals, I would like to first talk about diversity in infrastructure. I currently work closely with the CVB in bringing in tourism, I do contract sales with them. Part of our contract sales is at Oak Shores. I can tell you that last year in tax sales, we brought in $559,316 for our tax base in Mississippi. Out of that tax that was brought in, we're gonna talk about income. Income that Oak Shores generated just in short-term sales is $75,484. When we're looking at our short-term sales, we are also talking about military housing, which is very important as we are right, as Oak Shores butts up to Keesler Air Force Base. Not all of these officers or enlisted gentlemen coming in TDY for training have transportation, so this gives them an opportunity to be off-base but close to base where they can either walk or catch rides very easily. Without that use, I think that we would be hurting our military personnel. The diversity of the infrastructure, when we're talking about what is available for our outside salesperson, again, I'm going back to working with the CVB and contracting, we always, when we do contract sales, there are no, there's not one type of housing that's suitable for everybody. That's why when they do contract sales with us, they not only do a contract sale with a condominium, they are also doing it with hotels as well, because they know, research shows that there is no one fit, that you need a diverse infrastructure to bring in more tourism, and that's what our goal is for the Mississippi Gulf Coast. One of the other things that I had heard had to do with policies and maintaining occupancy levels. We provided our policies to the Planning Commission at the last meeting. We are very strict in maintaining a family environment as far as us as our company. I can only... I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else to my right?
Good afternoon, my name is Jacqueline Wilson, and I'm the general manager for Biloxi Beach Resort Rentals. I'll follow up with what Marie was saying. Oak Shores has come a very long way in the past few years, and I credit that to several management companies who have helped protect this property, and owners who want to invest in Biloxi and bring visitors here. I'll say that our short-term rentals just are regular people coming here to visit Biloxi. Last year, they grossed about $19,000. Our short-term military, meaning they stay here less than 30 days, brought in just at Oak Shores, $56,000. Since last year, we have gained almost 12 units at Oak Shores. Not only that, but their per diem has gone up, almost $30, so that is also going to increase the gross revenue that these owners are receiving. I think it would be an injustice for this not to pass. Oak Shores, like many people have said, is a great property, and we're all here to bring people to Biloxi. We're here to grow our city and grow our tourism, and by doing, by allowing short-term, we're gonna be able to bring more people in. I have a waiting list right now of about five or six owners who want to come on our program that we will not take until we know if this short-term passes. I also have owners who are on our program who want to purchase more units but will not purchase until this passes. Not only that, but they are, they are thinking about selling their units if it does not pass. And let's also look at last few years, I know we have owners who bought their units for 30, 40,000 at Oak Shores, they're selling now from anywhere from 80,000 to 90,000. So the short-term rentals have really increased the property value because people are looking to invest in this area.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to my right? I'm up, sir.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Sims, I'm here on behalf of support of the 1664 Beach zoning application. I manage a unit over there, and we have one under contract as well. The focus of this Oak Shore zoning change should be the application of Biloxi City Code Article 23-2B3, rezoning standards. The underlying rationale for the change being short-term by right should not be relevant in this decision today. This decision will be made because of theoretical future laws that are very, that would seem to be very arbitrary. A summary of those articles are: consistent with all city adopted plans, required to address a mistake in the original zoning, compatible with existing uses surrounding appropriate zoning, would result in a logical and orderly zoning pattern, would not encourage premature development, would not encourage and result in strip commercial, would not result in the creation of an isolated zoning district related adjacent lands, would not result in the adverse impacts on the property values of surrounding lands, and would not be adverse to environmental factors. This is what today's vote is about. This vote is not about the fact that just eight short weeks ago, the same zoning commission that is against this application moving forward told 17 applicants for conditional use their better plan was to have the HOA apply for rezoning. It's not about the fact that the same zoning commission is now set to propose to this council that every single tax parcel in every zoning that seeks short-term rental status will now go into individual hearings, amounting to five to 10 applications per week, which would be 50 to 100 applications annually. It's not about the failed council moratorium from four weeks ago on all short-term applications. It is about acknowledging that letters E, F, G, and I are met clearly based on current zoning and existing site conditions, very easily demonstrated. No development planned as it exists surrounded by the same, so it's not a strip, it is not isolated for the same reason, and this development exists and has no environmental impact. A, dozens of larger condominiums exist in CB. B, CB replaced the hospitality business. Even if Biloxi continues to believe that 29-day rentals are short-term and 30 are long-term, the fact that this is a seasonal destination with many lengths of time, just because of the aversion to short-term rentals does not mean that this is not considered an area for servicing hospitality guests of any length, given the character of the condo with its proximity to the beach pools and very desirable for snowbirds. Letter C, to the west is CB, to the north is CB RB, to the south is a beach, to the southeast is CB, and only 14 parcels of the east are in fact residential. Overwhelming character of surrounding zoning. Letter H, I see no way to argue this change could have adverse impacts. Vacation rents are typically higher than market rents, driving up the value of condos and presumably the value of the surrounding area. The council should not table a perfectly valid zoning argument over theoretical changes to the unrelated matter of short-term rentals and CB becoming zoned by right but a conditional use. Why should this complex that is trying to comply be penalized over the internal commission and council debates on the path forward for short-term rentals, especially when the case at hand should be decided on rezoning rationale?
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Good afternoon, thank you for hearing me today. My name is Danny Smith from Oak Shores, and I'm in favor of the rezoning. I've been to five meetings since December about this. Every one of them, a lot of these people have been to all of them too, anything to do with the moratorium and about us being zoned commercial. In December, the first hearing, the zoning board decided that they wanted to turn it down on the condition that they would advance the idea that we would be commercial, change the zoning. Then they had a public hearing, we went to that. The vote was 11 to 2, overwhelming, that they were for it. Then we came here, and it got tabled. And the basic thing here is, what I'd like to know is, if you know, do you have any idea how much longer this will go and what direction it's headed in so that people can make plans and, you know, if you have any idea to kind of get us off the edge, that's all I want to say. If you, if, once you make your decision to table this, please let us, give us some idea of how many more towns will be coming back and how long it's gonna go on. And I'm not pushing for an answer about definite, I'm just saying some idea, if you have any idea at all, where this is going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to my right?
Yeah, Bobby Carter with Mr. Gelford's Billfish Classic, I just wanted to update the city and the council, where we stand as of today, I'll send them a list. Last year at this time, on February 7th, we had 32 boats registered. On that list there, we're at 70. So they're coming, and as of today, the upgrade, we're at 82. So they're looking forward to coming to Biloxi, but I just want to update you guys with the list, it's the length, type, and where they're from, their protocol. So, looking forward to coming here to Biloxi, and anything to do to help you guys out?
He gave us a sheet of the list, everything, so we passed them along to council, I have one, and it shows 70 of them.
Right, that was, that was on February 7th. We had 70 boats registered, but as of today, we're at 82.
Really, that was pricey, these boats, like 60, 70 feet, 72 feet.
You know, three to four million per boat. And the...
That's probably the end of Harvard.
Yeah, easily. So anyway, any questions?
No, thank you, Bobby, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next time, George, put them on your tab so we can go in depth on it. Come on up, that's all.
He did it quick.
I know, he was quick, yeah.
Thank you. My name's Doug Brown, I'm a real estate investor, and as everybody knows, South Mississippi, the Gulf Coast area here, has been a hotspot for real estate investors locally and coming from other states to renovate our properties, afford closed homes, old apartment complexes, turn them into condos, and the momentum is really good. I'd hate to see it get the momentum shut down and all these investors start going other states, other places, to invest their money. So a lot has been done in the last seven, eight years as far as the complexes go, the housing, buying up old dilapidated buildings, fixing them up, and putting them back on the market, creating new development just pretty much everywhere. I have a unit now that's in Limbo that I would like to put a couple hundred thousand in and turn it into four condos and do vacation rentals, because it's, it's a good, it's a good investment. And not only here in Pensacola, it's got a good thing going, all down the Florida Panhandle. We'd hate to see our people going over there to spend their money and increase their tax revenue. The momentum is here, and I'd really like to see it stay here as well as you guys, you can't go wrong with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, come on up, sir.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Moro, I reintroduce myself, I'm a former commander, assistant commander for the New Orleans Police Department. When I looked over about buying a condo at Oak Shores, naturally I went to the police officer, the senior police officer, and asked about Oak Shores, about an investment over there. And it told me that at that time, it was right over two years ago, that the crime rate there has drastically reduced. In the past month, I believe, there was just one incident over there of vandalism and perpetuated, it was evicted from the place. Next door, the Jubilee, has a very high crime rate. The owner knew of it and did something that is reducing it, prostitution is over there, drugs, vandalism, domestic violence. And the apartment complex that's to the west, I think it's in Woodland Apartments, to the west of the Oak Shores, it's called Section 8. The police are having numerous calls over there because it's worked with the police. And they told me, one of the most, most called for, oh, so police officer to go to is domestic violence. Not a murder, they did, they go to a domestic violent case, and that's what they have over there, along with prostitution and drugs. And Oak Shores is a great investment over there, and I would have never invested money into there if they wouldn't believe that everything is improving. I know what you're all going through, my uncle, I talked to you, my uncle is a former New Orleans City Councilman, council president, and acting mayor of New Orleans, and I was very close to him, and I understand the decisions that you all do make. But anyway, I'd like you all to take in consideration, it's a great investment for us, mostly people who rent my unit are military. I do get a few people from the north, the snowboats, but I really like the military over there. And everyone is gonna be suffering from this if it's not changed to short-term rental. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, did I miss anyone? Did I miss anyone?
You did good.
All right, that concludes citizen comments, we're gonna move on to our policy agenda. Ordinance A, first reading, Lucy?
Ordinance to amend Section 23-3586 of the Land Development Ordinance to designate structures located upon 148 Seal and 179 St. Francis as city landmarks.
Moved by, moved by Mr. Lawrence, made a second. Second. Second by Mr. Glavine, that's the first reading. Ordinance B?
Ordinance to amend the Biloxi Land Development Ordinance, which addresses a new overlay district to be known as Downtown Howard Avenue CRO District.
I'll move it. Second by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale, and that also is the first reading. Ordinance C was moved by, who was that moved by, Lucy? Who was it? Was moved by Mr. Lawrence and Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I would... She needs to read it.
Oh, she needs to read it, okay.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for parcels of land from RM 30 High Density Multifamily to CB Community Business for properties collectively identified at 1664 Beach Boulevard.
All right, moved by Ms. Lawrence, Ms. Lawrence?
Yeah, I'm up with Jerry Krill and I think PDA by, they've been working and putting a set of rules and regulations together, and I'd like to add that presented to the council, but Jerry's not here today, so I hope to do that for next week, and everybody see, even the people that's waiting for it, to see what kind of rules and regulations they have to buy by. And that's the only reason I would table it, since he's not here, so I could have the rules and regulations presented to the council and let them look at it. So I'd ask you all to table it. PDA, you got something?
I think the Executive Committee of the Planning Commission met this past Friday to look at the changes we have proposed to the, to the ordinance, and it basically tries to accommodate the residents and the neighbors to lay some ground rules out, because when this ordinance was first, was first put into effect, a lot of these questions that come up were never even considered. So it tries to make it to where we can control it, we can monitor what's going on, we have a mechanism, if there's an issue, we can take care of it on our end. So if Jerry was here, he might could report, I don't know what, what they discussed last Friday. Ed may, Ed may have been involved or not, I'm not sure if Ed was involved.
May I ask a question?
Dr. Tisdale first, and then I'll go.
Yeah, a couple of things, and I appreciate that. I was, attended the meeting, and I know that Ben Sims was there, Ben's been following this. A couple of things, just observations, I agree that the condo owners, I'm a local guy, as most of us are, and that place has really been cleaned up over the past six or seven years, and I suspect it's primarily due, if not entirely, to do with the situation of short-term rentals. And I agree that there's a place for short-term rentals here on the coast. And honestly, I think that location would be a good location. However, there are some things that concern me. This latest wrinkle has come up because we have seen apartment complexes that are being flipped to condos without a change in zoning, and because of that, covenants come into play which have nothing to do with the city, we don't enforce covenants nor does the Planning Commission. So it would have been helpful, particularly in this case, if the property owner or owners had flipped the zoning from residential multifamily, 20 or 30 units per acre, to community business, which is what is being proposed now. That's the way to go. Unfortunately, this issue has just arisen recently because many of these condos or apartments that have been turned into condos have been operating without a city permit, so the city's unaware that they're out there. And once, I think it was Cypress Cove, once that issue came up, which was several weeks prior to this, that's when it was on everybody's radar that, boy, this is gonna be a sticky wicket. And it is a sticky wicket, and that's the reason I had suggested maybe a moratorium until we get all this ironed out. But that didn't happen, and that's fine. However, where we are now is you have an Executive Committee, I think it was called, of the Planning Commission meet last Friday, and they have a regularly scheduled meeting, the entire commission, this Thursday at 2 o'clock, and I suspect this is going to be on the agenda. Usually, they publish the agenda online the Friday before the weekend, but there was a link, so I couldn't look to see, but I suspect it'll be on the agenda. And what I would... And what I would urge my colleagues here is to do what Mr. Lawrence recommended, and that is table the issue until we can get the cart, excuse me, the horses in front of the cart on this issue. Because if we start rezoning at this point, we're going to have exceptions down the line, there's going to be very little consistency. And that's why I've really been pushing to just put everything on hold until we get this sorted out. And I think it was Mr. Smith, I'm with you, you just, if I'm a condo owner in Oak Shores, I just want to know where are we going to, where are we at the moment? We kind of know we're in nowhere. We can't do anything with our property, we'd like to know as soon as possible. And I'm thinking, if the Planning Commission says they're going to conduct a public hearing, then that involves, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, for a public hearing, I would assume that would be a full-blown hearing in front of the commission. You've got to advertise for fifteen days, and you're probably talking about a month from probably Thursday's meeting, which would be sometime in the middle of March before it, that public hearing occurs. And then you've got to transcribe what's said, which means it's going to be another couple of weeks before it gets to the council with a recommendation. So, that's kind of where we are now, Mr. Smith. I think, Ed, is that accurate? I want to, I don't always understand things correctly. So, if I'm a property owner right now, I bought a condo in an apartment complex, I mean, honestly, the first thing I would have done is, if I'm going to use this for short-term rentals, I'm going to be, this is going to be a nice little business. I should get a business permit from the city. But nobody's really done that at that location. So, if I'm on the other side of the coin, on the other side of the coin, if I've lived in that apartment forever and a day and plan to live there in the future, now it's flipped to condos, oy vey, what am I going to do? How do I deal with this? So, right now, really, there is nothing really settled about this through the Planning Commission. I don't think you're going to see it settled unless somehow the vote is differently today. I don't think we're going to see it settled until we have some discussion in a public hearing and it comes back before the council. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine.
Yes, first of all, I appreciate all the owners and interested parties coming before the council several times to voice their opinion. The way I read this is the Planning Commission looked at a zoning request. We're not here today to talk about short-term rentals. We're simply looking at the Planning Commission's recommendation of a zoning change. Mr. Creel put up some slideshow information last time and showed that predominantly around this, it's R thirty or whatever, RM thirty, it's predominantly commercial around it, and therefore, the Planning Commission felt it met the test to grant the request for the rezoning to commercial. If it does go through and we uphold that, then the next process is to submit an application for whatever use falls under commercial business, and it will have ample time for the Thursday meeting for, you know, whatever else and everything like that. So, I know you all have been waiting patiently, my position is that we're simply looking at the zoning change request, and I'd have to be, I'd have to vote for that at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Demme.
Well, can you sum it up nicely? I think my position is quite similar to his. We're here to approve what the zoning or what the Planning Commission sent to us to approve. I know the Executive Committee met to discuss rules and regulations pertaining to short-term rentals, but this application doesn't pertain to short-term rentals, other than the fact that the Planning Commission knows that what people will do within this community business zoning, which, like Mr. Glavine said, they'll still have to follow the rules and regulations for applying for even what's considered used by right. And it's still a business, you still have to follow all those rules and regulations. Here today, we have a force and ordinance to approve the zoning map amendment, and like Mr. Glavine, I want to move this forward today and support it.
Thank you, Mr. Demme.
Yeah, I'm going to go, I'm going to follow up on this. If y'all read the resolution, what you say in the tree, but they denied this, so you have to change what you want to do. My deal was to get it done right, get the rules and regulations in place, yeah, I don't know if it's going to take four or five months, and get this stuff done pretty good. They were set up to do the public hearing.
George, I'm sorry for interrupting you, no disrespect at all, but the first three sentences of the ordinance says ordinance to approve, they didn't deny this, they actually passed this.
I don't even see it, I mean, it's sitting right here, deny. Y'all keep telling me that, but it don't say that in this thing. Did you read it? Where does it say approve with?
Ordinance C, ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize change in zoning district classification for two parcels of land, community business, blah, 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 as the Oak Shores community complex.
Yeah, and it said here, the number of individuals that apply cases of soliciting condition used authorized to commit short-term rental with a number of individual units located actual, of recommendation of denial, Planning Commission extended their charge to the Planning Commission to have the public hearing. Says it right there.
I think there's three options.
I'm just saying, all I'm doing, I'm not trying to deny anything, I'm trying to get the rules and regulations put in place. That's all. I don't want to sit here and say we're going to deny it. That's why I just, I know, but for us, when you pass this, they're going to think they have the right to go out there and do short-term rental, because that's what the condition uses for, and that's what the, so that's the problem. They can't do it, they don't have a permit, they can't get permission. If they do it, they do it illegally. So, that's why I'm trying to...
Okay, 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 let's get a little, let's get a little, okay. Go ahead and finish with your comments, Mr. Lawrence.
That's why I've suggested that we table this, get all the rules and everything, bring them to us, and get this done, done right. So, once we do it and pass it, then everybody will be in place to do what they need to do. That's all.
Mr. Barrett?
Ed, we're, so, right here. So, whenever this, so the recommendation from the Planning Commission on this is to change the zoning, is that correct?
What's before you to do is to change the zoning?
Just to change the zoning on this complex. Do you remember what the vote was on this recommendation?
It was eleven, twelve votes, okay, but it was pretty much through the jab.
And then, if anyone is going to legally operate a short-term rental, if this is approved, they must submit an application to be approved or denied and go through the whole process, correct?
They have to go through an administrative process to basically get a business license and do a few other things that basically ensures that regulations are going to be adhered to.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Demme.
George, in the resolution that you're reading, the Planning Commission denied numerous individual applications for short-term rental, but when the owner of the property came back and applied for an application to change the zoning, that was what was approved by the Planning Commission, correct?
The Planning Commission denied a number of the applications.
Individual applications, right. This zoning amendment change was never denied.
They then gave a charge to themselves, to the staff, to go ahead and consider doing a zoning change, since that seemed to be the more appropriate way to handle this type of use.
And the Planning Commission then did, in fact, approve...
Make a recommendation of approval.
Did they call for the public hearing?
Well, that was the public hearing.
That was the public hearing, okay.
I'm asking him.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of y'all's time to talk.
That was the public hearing.
I'm trying to get this straight to y'all, Jesus, you know?
Dr. Tisdale?
No, I'm asking him a question.
Okay, you ask another question.
I'm asking it, no, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So, you explained to us exactly what went on, and what is the next step? None?
Well, the next step is for you all to adjudicate whether that's the appropriate, the recommendation should go forward. Now, in the interim, while we were going over this, we began to see some other things that happened, and we were trying to address how short-term rentals would work, and a lot of these other conversions that we're going to expect are going to probably come down the pipe as well. So, we were talking about the possibility of changing whether it be conditional use and what would be by right, and how that would work with properties, because when you start getting from the RM thirty to the CB, CB is pretty much a visitor accommodation zone, RM thirty is still a residential zone. So, we wanted to make sure that we weren't adversely impacting a lot of those residential neighborhoods.
It's not that much.
By just suddenly changing the zoning and making it more of a hotel accommodation. And that's one of the concerns they had, that's why we're meeting Thursday, at the end of the meeting with the old business, to discuss some of the issues that we talked about for the last couple of months. And that is how do we actually administer these new visitor accommodation leases that are coming into previously residential zones?
Well, a lot of these things I'll discuss tonight, say, new set of rules and regulations, you pretty much have them in place, that y'all can present that to us.
Yeah, and in fact, what would happen is, from the meeting on Thursday, as part of the old business, we're going to, then, I'm hoping the Planning Commission would actually give the staff another charge to reconnect another public hearing to specifically lay out what those administrative changes should be.
And how soon will y'all get that to us?
To do that, we're going to have to develop some text, so it's going to be several weeks to put that together. But once we have it, it'll be published, it'll go before the public, we'll make a recommendation. You'll get it back within five or six weeks.
We can, we can short-term, I'm sorry, you know, Peter had indicated that, you know, we've got some ideas and drafts of what we feel like, so we're trying to, you know, short-circuit that, go directly to the rules and regulations, we actually had some drafting, some ideas on, so. The first step is this.
This is the first step.
And the second step, we're ahead of that curve in what we feel.
We could have a public hearing or workshop, public hearing, where we all look over different drafts of how to change ordinance, what we want in it, and not, y'all are going to be approving the final ordinance changes anyway.
Absolutely.
So, we could just, not to bypass the Planning Commission, but rather than then make recommendations that y'all may or may not like, let's just have y'all look at it on the front end.
Well, that's the reason I asked to table this, and that's the main reason. You pass this, they think they go to new short-term rental, all of a sudden you hear a bunch of rules and regulations they don't like. That's all, all I'm trying to do is make sure it's right when we start, that's the name of the game. So, I mean, that's up to y'all, that's my call, table it, get all information, let the people see exactly how it's going to work with all the rules and regulations, because actually, you can change this, they can't have short-term rental, because you're going to deny it, the Planning Commission, you're going to stop them until you get the rules and regulations in place. So, that's why you're wasting your time doing this. That's why I said table it, get the rules and regulations straight. That's all, pretty simple to me.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I want to just expand a little discussion here just for a moment. This is not about short-term rentals, that's what I heard some of my colleagues say.
Yes.
And that's true, short-term rentals, in effect, become a fait accompli. If, since it's currently zoned RM twenty or RM thirty, what should have happened is, since to operate a short-term rental in an RM twenty or thirty zone, you need to get a conditional use. If you get it a conditional use, and the Planning Commission, they approve it, you go get a permit, you're legal. But that's not what's happened here. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Shamper, you're the expert here, okay? That's not happened here. An easy way to make this issue disappear for this complex, the easy thing to do is just rezon it. Make it community business. That way, you don't need a conditional use, it's permitted by right in community business, we're good to go. But there's another RM twenty or RM thirty property, I'll bet you, if not quite a few, that will flip to condos if they have not already done so. And that's why I think, I'm with Mr. Lawrence, we need to table this until we have that public hearing. So, one of the issues that I've been, I've raised when this issue has come up, I always cross-examined Mr. Creel and said, how are we going to get these people on the radar? How do we know who's operating a short-term rental and whether they're operating it legally in the city? How do we know that? We don't, unless somebody follows the process, unless somebody says, I'm going to do what the process requires, I'm going to go to the Planning Commission, I'm going to get a conditional use approval, I'm going to go get my permit, that's terrific, I'm paying all the taxes I'm supposed to pay, I got the permit, it's good, I think, is it good forever, right? That permit? Okay. To this day, we still have no idea how many short-term rentals are operating in an RM twenty or RM thirty apartment complex, nor do we know if they're operating where they're prohibited, in single-family residential areas. These are all the issues, primarily with RM twenty and RM thirty, the apartment complexes, that the Planning Commission is trying to deal with. If this is approved today, if I'm sitting out there and I'm a short-term rental owner, I'm going to have a drink after this, good for us. I understand that. But if I'm another, if I'm on the Planning Commission, or I've got another apartment complex that's flipping to a condo based on the public hearing, they may be following a different set of rules, which makes you guys exceptions, which you could care less about if you just want to run your short-term rental. I'm more interested in consistency and complying with what you're required to do if you're going to run a business in the city of Biloxi. I'll end on that gum pop, it was appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Demme.
I don't have much to follow up, other than just one concern. I think if the concern is that another condo or another apartment complex is going to come in and ask for a zoning map amendment to change their zoning, they're going to have to meet the standards and the burden that Oak Shores has met. So, at that point, we'll have to make, we'll have to make a meritorious decision on that zoning map amendment.
I need to pull up the dates, I can't get it back on, it keeps coming to Tuesday, wish it wrong.
Done, okay. All right, I'll make my final comments are pretty much the same as Mr. Glavine and Mr. Demme, is that we're here just for zoning change, and I'm going to deal with that issue Mr. Abad, our attorney, said he was going to work on that short-term rental, clean up those things that need to be cleaned up. So, with that being said, you know, we don't have to push anything forward past this zoning change at this moment. So, I don't think that there's no problem with changing the zoning at this point, and that things like this need to kind of continue to be moved forward. So, you have another question?
Question for Mr. Shamper, how many other, or do, let me think for a moment, how many short-term rental requests or conditional use requests will be on the next Planning Commission agenda Thursday? Are there any?
We have four.
You have four. Are there any passed next week that you can foresee?
There are a number that are sitting in the wings, waiting to see what's going to transpire here, yes.
Okay, that's all, thank you. So, with that, you have one more?
On the table, just on the table.
Okay, you want to go ahead and...
Yeah, so I make the motion that we table it until after the public hearing.
Yeah, and I'll second that motion.
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale, to table it and to after public hearing. Any questions on that from the council? My call for the question, all in favor and table it? All against? That's five, two, or two in favor, five against? Motion carry. I mean, motion deny it, I'm sorry. Motion deny, deny. Call for the question. Now, I'm going to call for this question here. Okay, all in favor of the ordinance at hand? Okay, five, and all against? Two? It carry it. All right, resolution D, Lucy?
Resolution to grant minor subdivision final plot approval for property identified as 534 Beach Boulevard.
I'll move it up for discussion.
Move by, move on Mr. Lawrence. I'll go ahead and second that.
I was going to have, where's that at? Where'd it go?
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence, D.
Yeah, D, we're talking about D.
D, yes.
What are y'all doing here, you know, keep... What are y'all doing here, you know, keep changing these pieces of land down in these areas, and nothing happens? All they do is wind up overgrown. So what we doing here that's gonna help this piece of property?
Well, we've been told this to develop some residential housing.
Yeah, that's the same thing we heard three times down there. Not to let people develop anything.
They're dividing it into three lots, they don't need any type of infrastructure improvements because it's already available.
Ed, can they use them for short-term rentals?
Evidently.
Actually, it's in the waterfront district zone, so it could possibly end up there.
It sound like Biloxi cannot survive without short-term rentals, it's like we couldn't survive without the taxi business. You know, we're doing the same thing with all this. But my thing is, we keep doing this, and none of the properties yet been developed. They keep saying the same thing, that they've led it down twice, and she failed all it is, it's an overgrown piece of property.
Well, this is a legitimate subdivision property.
You know, pile of parts and stuff, nobody does anything. You know? So what did you recommend? You gonna have one big piece of property, or you gonna have three pieces of property inside of one?
This will be one lot turning into three lots, yes. Two half-acre lots and one one-acre lot.
Yeah, same thing the other one did.
All right. Okay, anyone else, Ms. Newman? Mr. Demme? Dr. Tisdale? Mr. Barrett? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor?
Yeah, we're passing it off. Passing like the rest of them.
That's everybody?
They don't know anything.
Six zero. Mr. Lawrence for that.
Geez.
I need a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make it.
I'll second it. Okay, who was that, moved it?
Nathan.
Mr. Barrett moved it, second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence, do you have any, any on that consent agenda?
Yeah, I do have, I feel like I just asked a few questions about, I know we come with this made-up lawyer that words, descriptions area, that made an error, that said we won't say the mistakes, it's wrong, there's not, nothing about it right. How come these things just wasn't corrected? Why weren't they fully corrected? The date's wrong, the project number's wrong, the 913, 960, all these mistakes, I mean, and then you're not correcting them, so what are you passing the mistakes? There's like four or five, and they sent this morning, and it was all wrong.
It's not a mistake if we correct it before it comes to you.
They didn't say that. They called this morning, said they wanted, they didn't substitute anything, they just said, listed all the mistakes. They didn't say they changed them. Now, two of them they did, but the other one they just said they weren't gonna do anything about it, called them, they said on the phone today. So, I mean, how can you pass something that's either a wrong number, or wrong something in it, or a wrong date? Why was it supposed to be the 19th? It actually was supposed to have been 2020? So, I mean, to me, you have to correct these things, otherwise Mike Leonard tells me next month, "Well, y'all passed it." Sorry, that's what he tells us all the time, "Well, y'all passed it." So...
Yeah, I think when we get into the, when we get up into the double letters of resolutions, there's generally gonna be a typo.
Well, y'all play the phones, it's all on the phone, all the ones that are wrong. I know one is N, S, this is one I wrote down, that just had mistakes in it, you know? Then they had DD, it was supposed to be number 1035, I called with their son is. So if you wanna go through it individually and change them, the fact sheet's wrong, date's wrong, I mean, I got that from them. That was sent to us. Huh?
They're closing the project, they're actually scribbling errors and stuff.
Okay, I'm gonna give you the, go ahead, speak on it. Speak on it, Robert.
I know you.
Go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, Lawyer Junior. Go get him.
What's the problem?
Come on, come on, Robert. I'm just saying, I don't think you should pass these things with the wrong information.
Correct them, like Peter said, if we correct them.
I'm sorry, if you weren't correcting them, then amend them and correct them, you know?
And so, I just suggested that for the ones that, the scribner errors that have no substantive purpose in these resolutions that are meant to close capital projects, if you're uncomfortable, then we'll just amend it. Just tell us, the scribner errors that you have an issue with, let's just amend those resolutions.
Well, let me, you know, if it's a number, you know, and it's happened before, we corrected it before, 35 instead of 45, or whatever, I mean, the numbers, you know, the description is correct, is that not right? As you said. So, in the future, we'll remove this capital project, as long as the project is described in name, where here's a title and describes exactly what it does. The numbers does not materially mean anything.
Is that not corrected though?
Well, we corrected where we caught it, right? I mean...
I just think you should.
There's no...
You got an opinion from Lawyer Junior.
1045, or...
I just think they should be corrected, that's all.
Substantive, but, but, you know, these numbers are just a list, an item on our, on a spreadsheet that describes the project.
Well, we did, at the start of the meeting, we suspended the rules to substitute these, and I think that motion passed. So, I mean, what's before you are the corrected resolutions, as far as I know.
Say that again?
When we started the meeting, we suspended the rules and substituted these corrected motions at the start of the meeting, so the corrected motions are before you now.
Yeah, but you only corrected two of them. I was talking about all the ones that, when they said they made a lot of mistakes in them, but they weren't gonna do anything for your information. You did correct two, 'cause you substituted two of them. And I'm like, what Robert said, all you need to do is put the right information in it. If you gotta amend them all, or you can handle it, I mean, the states was wrong with them, but you can't have 2019, it's supposed to be 2020, and you can't have project 1035 as 1050, I mean, you can't have, to me, different, and then the fact sheet from one of it was totally different. I mean, that came today on the, the city sent that to us, so y'all had to, one of y'all had to do that. That came over at the, just...
I received it this morning at the house, so I had the stuff, and I looked it all up. They just put those, there's made mistakes in them. Now, my thing is to change the mistakes, that's all.
I mean, not really changing anything, but at least listed correctly.
I agree with you, I agree with you that these things that are called scribners errors should be amended inside the resolution. That should be changed now, as part of what you're passing.
Can you do that, or we have to, just, you wanna read them?
I'll tell you what, read them with the mistakes.
No, you can do that.
Make a motion to amend it, and then we'll read them into the records.
Right.
Okay? You wanna, you wanna move it?
Yeah, I'm gonna move it.
Okay, moved by, moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Ms. Newman. Could you read them into the records, all the...
The scribner errors that are within that resolution.
I don't have them, I don't have them, we should have them.
Okay, you wanna read them into it?
We got them, Lawrence.
Mr. Lawrence will read them into it.
You wanna read them? Your five S. Five S, the fourth declarative, declaration down incorrectly reads Circle Park, should read the Visitor Center.
That's it.
Five DD, project number should read 1035. Five XX, second decorative, declarative shows subscription expiring on February 5th, 2019, should read February 5th, 2020. Five SS, title of resolution shows project number 913, but body incorrectly reflects 613.
613, that's it, okay.
So those have been read into the record, they'll be in the minutes.
Thank you.
And the other one was LL, they said they had the wrong fact sheet attached to it.
Okay, go ahead and read that one into it.
Yeah, all they did was just said that on LL, they said they had, the fact sheet did not match that resolution.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the substitutes.
That was a substitute.
That was one of the substitutes.
Five M and five LL were substitutes.
Okay, but those being, those being read, it was moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Ms. Newman. Any questions, any other questions with anyone? All in favor? You had a question?
Of the amendment, of the amendment.
Voting to amend all those, those date?
There's more errors in there than this, then.
There are more?
Yeah, like on the one for Keith Hurd, it, page two states, three months, I meant, on page four, it states three months, and then on page, it, it says three months in the parentheses, and then it says five months in the sentence.
You see that one?
This is II, I think.
I wouldn't vote for that anyway, so I didn't know.
One of them says three months, in the same sentence, it says three months and five months. And then it says from March 1st through the end of May, so March, or May's three months, but it says five months in that same sentence on page four.
So, maybe the five months, that's what we're asking.
And then, I had a question that might be another error as well.
That's his old contract, right?
Three months, three months all over.
No, it says five months in that sentence, though. Right next to...
The resolution itself?
Yes, and on II.
Oh, in the description?
Yeah, in the description, it says five months.
That's too many errors.
On page four. Hold on, I wrote it down, hold, let me get to page four. Number two, fees, $10,000 per month for an initial contract period of five months, March 1st through May 31st. That's three months. On number two, on page four, under fees.
That's correct.
I did, that's what I did.
So that needs to be corrected as well.
It needs to be three.
That should be three in number two. Number two fees in the agreement should be three calendar months.
And everywhere else in the resolution says three months.
Correct. That's the only place on that one I saw. And then I had a question on FF, which is the Oro Creek Keith agreement. It says that our original operating budget for that was 30,000, and we spent 25, which leaves us 6,000 more. 25 and 6 is 31,000.
That's FF.
You are correct. Beverly, Beverly, Mark. Should that be five? No.
You're gonna have a chance to...
From Bernie. She don't need to do that.
It says that we spent 25 of it, and that we have six remaining, but the original budget was only 30.
Should that be five?
Yep.
Okay, maybe, maybe make that correction?
Yeah, based on the principle of math, that should be, that should be 5,000.
Any more, any more corrections?
We covered LL, right? Because LL was the same thing.
Yes, we did cover that one. Yes, we covered that one.
We need to amend the contract in LL, the contract fees, number two, change five calendar months to three calendar months. And on FF, the third paragraph, sixth line, or fifth and sixth line, change $6,000 to $5,000.
Okay. Okay. Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Ms. Newman. Any more questions or corrections? All in favor? An amendment? Yep, seven zero. Motion carry. Now, we're gonna move on with the consent agenda. Ms. Newman, you have any other questions? Mr. Demme?
I, I know a lot of this, we have things that I'm aware of that are being intended to be paid for by the bond money. And I know when we talked about this, I asked that we get an itemized outline of the expenditures from that bond. Do we have that?
It's in the resolution.
Where, in the resolution, is it? Which resolution?
I think Q.
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 When the, when the bond, bond money comes in, it goes into two accounts, separated in the account, the project account.
And the account, the account that's set up to pay the issuance fees. Those total issuance fees, as I recall, Jane, 127,000? 123,700 was the total cost of issuance, that the fees that, of the, of the bond money that went into the issuance account. The rest all came to the project account. And I can give you that itemized list, I'll be happy to do that separately.
Now, I was looking in the, in the resolutions themselves, like the Ward 4 paving, and I didn't see, I mean, I was just curious to know how many other ones on this list were all attributed to that, but Q, as Mr. Sizzle has handed me, does have an itemized list in it of what is intended to be spent on this. And so, what I want to follow up on is, as we spend, you know, this is, this shows the proposed purposes of what it is. I actually want an itemized list of what's been spent and on what projects, so we can track the spending and the use of this bond money.
Let me briefly explain how this is gonna play out. What you're asking, we're asking to approve today is to simply move the bond money, the 14.38 million dollars, into the capital project budget. We're not asking to spend it, only asking to move it in the budget and to establish those accounts.
Right.
Now, we will have to come back to you, for every dollar we need to spend, we're gonna have to come back to you, project by project, with contracts or amendment to existing contracts.
I agree.
And then we'll be able to do, as we've done in the past, give you a quarterly reconciliation, I could do more often if you need, but quarterly reconciliation of all of the, all of the projects and what the balances are.
Thank you. I'm looking, that's, I was just looking at all the new capital projects that were being created.
Mm-hmm.
And so, when we create those capital projects, and it's almost an assumed expenditure, we're just spending that money there. And, and it's fine if we don't, we have this now, show me the, the projection, but now, if we can, as we move forward, when something comes up that is paid for out of these bond proceeds.
Right. The register, if you will, project by project. In concept, you're gonna spend $2 million on, on paving, okay? But in, in detail, the gospel is the warrant that you approve with that project attached to, not just the, the capital project fund, but the, not, not only the project, but the source, that one of that 14 million dollars may be one source of a project, but another source may be a grant. So, hopefully, that we're gonna establish a system where the register is the warrant register that you approve. And then you, then you can generate an accounting, if you will, not only the budget, but also the expenditures, and then determine by fiscal year and source what you have removed.
That's, so, right, and so, I know exactly what you mean and how you're explaining it, but that creates a register that's gonna have projects paid for by different sources. What I just, all I want is a ledger that starts at 14 million, and says, 200,000 was spent on this one, 400,000 was spent on this one, 20,000 was spent on this one, just so we can see the...
And that would be the, you know, the register of the source, and then, as we spend it fiscal year by fiscal year. You know, we may, we can't spend all of it in one year, you know, literally.
I'm sure you could.
So, well, we could, but I mean, logically, what you gotta do? I could, I mean, but, you know, you got to approve these, these 14 million dollars worth of projects, but then we're gonna track them, and there will be no question on where you are. You know, in, in the systems I've written, you can look prior year and current year, and you can see where you are in different categories, whether it's a contract payment, or whether it's forced account labor, or any of those kinds of things, what we're intending to establish a system that we haven't had in 20 years.
That's right. Well, we, we spent 14 million dollars last time on a bunch of things that were...
I have no idea.
Right, that's, we had no idea. And so I wanna make sure that we have an idea every time something comes on the table, that where it's coming from, and we have a list of all the projects that were paid for and are prepared to be paid out of this 14 million dollar bond.
We're on the same page, and again, I think I may have shown you some of the things that could be, could be done, but we're intending to do that, so there will be no question on any, you know, any source, how we spent the 14 million dollars over the last two or three fiscal years, or if it's the last two years, or how much of the projects, where do we get the project? We got some source, you know, various bonds, or, or the 14 million, or the 2017 bond? That's my intent, is to have a system that, you know, you don't have to call for somebody to interpret numbers off of spreadsheets and say, "This is the count." We want it to drop out of the system. The system would be generated, we're establishing a budget entry to the project and to the source, and then you're gonna spend it through your warrant system, and that's gonna be the register.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Demme?
Could I ask a question on that?
Just note that I'm, or no, on SS.
Okay, we're gonna get that to it. Uh, Dr. Tisdale?
Not a thing.
Ooh, okay, Mr. Glavin?
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Barrett?[1792.82]
This is, um, questions on the items on the, right?
Yep.
Okay, I have a bunch. First of all, um, on E, the grant monies for the police department. And I don't have a question for the chief, but what I'd like to do, all these grant monies that come in, I'd like to have like a running total, I think we're almost six months into this year's fiscal, this fiscal year. So if we could get some kind of deal just to keep track of, for like the police and fire department, those grant monies that are coming in, so we can see how much above the budget, you know, that, and I'm not, this isn't anything negative, just so we can, you know, at the end of the year, know how much, you know, grant money we had come in to those departments in addition to what we set the budget for.
And, and along those lines, because we're using a fee within, uh, the accounting system called project, right? And you tracking project as, as a project number within the, uh, whatever fund, which would be the, whatever section and division. So, I mean, there's bits and pieces of that that should be able to, if you go pull it by project, you got a GRNT four, three, two, whatever, and it should be able to do that. But that's all part of the system we're trying to get, you know, it's a matter of how we spread those things as well as projects in our, you know, uh, eighty or so balance sheet items.
And it's nothing negative, I think it's great that we're getting these, but I mean, it's just, I think it's something that we need to, to, as far at the end of the year, you know, the police department got this much money in grant in addition to their budget.
That's a perfect example, that, you know, you, you use your budget, okay? Hundred thousand dollars, and sixty thousand dollars is supposed to be coming from grants, okay? You go spend a hundred thousand, but you have not received the grant yet.
Correct.
So there's gotta be some accounting there.
Yes.
And so, that's the kind of thing we wanna get to in, in our system.
Okay. Correct.
We have to do a budget amendment, each one of those comes here and is approved. So there's a, there's a track record, an audit trail all the way through, about how many.
Yeah, on received.
Amendments that we did and why.
Okay, all right.
We can total those up.
Okay, so the next is five H, the seats. Can you sort of give me some insight on that, the thirty-five thousand dollars?
This is the stadium that we own, and some of the seats were broken. So we are actually going through a series of projects in, in the baseball stadium right now, and include, includes a fence that we put around, some electrical equipment, and includes, uh, going around the drink rails, uh, stanchions and, and, uh, wire brushing them and, and recupling them.
Okay.
And involves some concrete, cracked concrete and.
Was this thirty-five thousand?
All of these are, are gonna be budgeted against the baseball fund.
So this is, so this is budgeted out, out of the baseball fund, so this was in our budget for the year?
Yes.
Okay, that's all a question?
What, what we did, and all of these, uh, five or six different work orders all come in, some of which includes labor, labor costs and public works. They'll come to me, I'll put them under a memorandum, we'll send them to accounting. Accounting will then, um, basically credit, credit us back that, that money and take it out of the baseball fund. Of course, the baseball fund, as you know, we're fifty-fifty with the team.
Um, okay, then P, on the BTV, is that something that was in the budget that we set at the begin? Item P for the BTV, is that something that was in our budget when we set the budget in, at the beginning of the year?
Well, we had a previous amendment where we authorized twenty-one thousand, we got another quote, it's down to nineteen thousand, but this is being paid out of the, uh, government franchise fee that the cable companies are paying. And that was.
I just wanna make sure we're adding stuff, okay?
No, that's covering that.
And then my only thing on Keith Hurd, and, and I'm, I'm not opposed to this, but on this next three-month deal, up to this point, we haven't received, I, I know that we have a report and, of things that being done, but unless we receive something solid on this, as far as money in hand from his efforts, this will be the last time I support bringing him on, unless we have something solid in hand.
Yeah, I wonder something about that too.
And then, um, R through BB, and I know we've already addressed this, just to, just to, um, make sure, by creating those capital projects, we are not spending any money. We'll have to come back for everything that is spent and, and approve each one individually.
And that'll be approval of a contract or approval of an amendment to an existing contract.
So even on Q, at this point, even though it has that list of everything on there, we're just approving, accepting the fourteen million dollars at, at this point, it's not allocating anything anywhere?
It's, it's just putting them in those buckets for, for budget purposes only.
Okay.
Those, those will all change as we move through the year. Bids come in, contracts are awarded, uh, bids come in high, bids come in low, there'll be, there'll be movement all through the year, but you're gonna see all that.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Lawrence?
I wanna go back to J. I didn't get to finish here, we got too many things here. You read what they, the backup on this resolution, all of a sudden you have a board running, whether they can get these grants or not. You got the, the board that's created from the Main Street Board, then it's got to go to you, or do you have, who has the final say here?
The board. And Don, I mean, Pat Wally was here earlier, but he's the president.
Okay, you got a board that they created?
No.
And they're gonna make the decision on this?
What this is, is an amendment of the prior resolution, where the prior resolution had a grant of twenty-five thousand per housing unit, and we're, we're basically amending that to state it's up to twenty-five thousand to give flexibility. Not every, not every unit is going to warrant a full twenty-five thousand dollars. It may only be five thousand. So we're basically making this more flexible and stretching that money out over a number of projects. As far as the decision, that's a joint decision that's going to be made, uh, that decision is ultimately made by the council, whether or not this is a worthy project. Main Street is the administrator of that grant.
I don't know if any, uh, listed most residential, regional residential, but they also listed business. Now, is any business like having a hard time straining like around, uh, the west end of Bucksie? Down there by Dixie Place, where it's been torn too bad? Is any, is any way that's, that's something we can, that have them apply for? Now, give them money where they can either upgrade their building, but they're already in business. A lot of things that you can't, had to be empty for a year, you have to wait five years, always. But I mean, there's a lot of businesses on the west end of Howard Avenue, have been straining for over two years. So like, there was a bunch on the Division Street, I mean, had too few people just shut down. Okay, now, how can we help somebody that stayed open and still trying to fight it and hope to do better with the new roads and earth becoming? Do we have any options for these people to apply for, enter this stuff?
Yeah, I mean, and that's part of the, the new district where you just created, those businesses were not in there until last week. And now that is part of the Main Street, uh, if not a facade-type grant, that there's other avenues and we can certainly look at that, and if it's, if it's proper, we can tweak that.
We need to go up there and go down there and tell the people, whether it's Howard Avenue or Division Street, they have an opportunity to apply for something to help them, so it's either try to stay open, business-wise. Everybody now got a little apartment on top of their place, you know? But I mean, there's a lot of businesses that you wanna stay open, you don't wanna lose, you know? I mean, I tell you, wanna burger burger, how they stayed open this long, I have no clue. Okay, that's a little, well, they probably need some kind of maybe facade grant, some kind of business grant to help them upgrade, you know, been through a lot of dust and trash and breaking up roads and everything else and it's killed their business, you know? So I mean, it's gotta be something, you can't just run around and say, we're gonna build a new apartment with somebody, give them twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, you need to help people to try to sustain, since it's bad times in Bucksie, it's been tough. So I mean, there's gotta be something I can go down there and tell them, and take them apply for, to help them. And I was wanting to bring it up, and that one is, um, I don't, uh, agree with everybody on the herd. I don't, I don't see where we receive a whole lot of anything. And I mean, you know, I, you're like, you always say the same thing, probably you gotta get a bang for your buck. Well, I haven't been seeing anything, and I haven't received anything, and it's thought that we shouldn't be getting from the state. We, together.
We'll talk about that, I mean, I, I respect for you, you know, I, I respect your position, but you don't know what has been done.
Right.
Okay, um, we got everything done on the consent agenda, everybody? Okay, um, we're gonna go ahead and vote on it, and I'll get the exceptions afterwards. All in favor? And my exceptions, Mr. Lawrence, which ones, your exceptions are on?
Which one, which one, the herd?
Uh, the seven zero with the exceptions for you, and which ones?
Uh, the herd, whatever.
Which one is that?
I'm trying to find that number, I got somebody marked on this one.
Which one? I, I?
I, yeah, that one. Yeah, we corrected all the other problems, that, that's fine, I had a problem with them. The other one I wanna do is, uh, the N.
Any N?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Newman? None. Uh, Mr. Deming? SS. Okay, uh, Dr. Sizel? None. Mr. Glavin?
None.
None. And, Ms. Barrett? And also have none. All carry. All righty, let's see, where we had, ooh, it's a long one. Code enforcement hearings. Ooh, that looks good.
They did a good job cleaning that up.
Yeah. All right, go ahead, Ms. Shamrock.
Okay, first case is Charles Ozen and Cindy L. Crum, and that's, uh, one zero three seven three, Will Market Lake Road. And that's still in violation, as you can well tell from the picture.
Is there anyone, anyone here to speak on behalf of Charles and Cindy Crum?
Let me just interject, uh, that property, this, this fellow's filed bankruptcy, and we've gotten some calls this week from his bank saying, uh, they didn't mind cleaning up, if we clean up the property, and it's under a stay under bankruptcy court, they didn't want us to disturb the building and the collateral. And I, I just saw these pictures today and sent them to him, said, you know, I don't know where the land and the collateral starts or stops, and, uh, but any action we take probably is gonna be subject to bankruptcy court. We're gonna go ahead and get with the bank and put the, shift the burden on the bank to go ahead and.
So give them thirty days?
Okay, well, he's here.
Okay, you wanna speak on behalf of him?
Yeah, good.
Come on, sir.
I'm in the process, uh, your own.
Could you speak into the mic so we can hear you?
Your own building inspector inspected these buildings. And the only one that they said that had to come down was the one that I got torn halfway down right now. I work six days a week, I got one day a week to work on it manually, promise up. I got the one building that your building inspectors came out and inspected, all buildings on that property. And Jay Crowell knows about it, and this one structure that I've, I've gotten torn halfway down is the building that was in concern. I'm tearing halfway down, I'm in the process, like I said, I, one day a week, I work. I'm in the process of getting busted down there and get hauled out of the trash, hauled out to the road, to the city of Bucksie, to, you know, picked up.
How much time you need, sir?
How much time do I need, uh, to get the rest of it down, uh, and hauled out to the road?
Can we start by giving you thirty days? And then we can check your progress?
Give me twenty days, and, and then come back and take a look. I had a busted building down, I, I should have, you know, been pulled out of the trash, out, pulled up by the road to be hauled off. And, uh, like I said, the, the only structure, uh, your building inspectors, under the Jay Crowell's orders, came out and inspected all the buildings, and the one building that's halfway torn down is the one that had to come down.
Yeah, we're gonna give you thirty days and then we'll check your progress, okay?
That's, that's.
We give them thirty days. Second one, Mr. Deming, all in favor? Seven zero?
Thank you.
We got thirty days, sir. Okay, thank you. Jesus, and we'll check. Ms. Lavinia Fortenberry, Lavinia? That don't work that bad.
Okay, second case is Lavinia Fortenberry, and this is three fifty-one Bayview Avenue.
Is anyone here to speak on behalf of Ms. Lavinia Fortenberry? Anyone here to speak on behalf of Lavinia Fortenberry? Consider that matter closed.
Okay, the third case is Dina Ruth, Ruth Garbin Lad, and that's at, uh, two fifteen Third Street, and that's been resolved. And the last case is Anthony Marshall, which is on Nixon Street.
I gave him thirty days and he still didn't do it. Okay, anyone here to speak on behalf of Ms. Anthony Mar, Marshall? Anyone here to speak on Anthony Marshall? Consider that matter closed. Still abolishing, yes.
Ed, on that last one, I know it's already closed, but I just wanted a personal knowledge question. Was there, was there a structure on that property?
No.
I don't see a structure in any of the pictures, no.
Isn't there, isn't there a process in which you can petition to allow your property revert back to a vegetative state? What's that called?
Well, it, it is a process, but it is something that they have to verify through certain channels and.
Right, I, I know I've heard this process before done in, in this council with, with Mr. Crowell. You don't know the name of it?
Again, I don't know, but I know the process you're talking about.
I'll just, I'll ask Google, Google probably know. Thanks.
Any emotional routine agenda? So moved, Dr. Sizel, moved by Dr. Sizel, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Glavin? Any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I can't, you got anything? It's outdated, anything good? You know, the money you talked about before, we received the two point four million that I worked before, so we waiting for another million.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor? Seven zero? So moved, motion care. I need a motion to recess. So moved, Dr. Sizel, seconded by Mr. Deming. All in favor? Seven zero, motion care.